When the chips are down and time is running out, that's when you really discover the power of a great community bank. West Tennessee Bank is proud to be an independent community bank staffed with people you know and trust. West Tennessee Bank, a division of Decatur County Bank. We think you'll like us. Equal Housing Leader, Member FDIC.
I am the chairman of the board. We're taking with our meeting. The first thing I'd like to ask is we have a motion to approve the new agenda. We have a motion to second approve the agenda. All the papers say aye. Okay, then that is approved. And the first thing will be our consent agenda. We have a motion to second approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? All the papers say aye. Foes know, then that is approved. And I don't think we have any dedications in that. But we do have celebrations in that.
May I first introduce a few invited guests who came in? And we'll start with the one who came in last first.
First shall be.
Of course, the first shall be last, so y'all gonna quote scripture on me also? Okay.
I also hope this is the first that Dr. Cypress was at a meeting before.
Okay. You can tell you're taking order even at Free Hartman University. But we have two invited guests from Free Hartman University. Dr. CJ Byers. Oh, sorry, three. I'm sorry. Yeah. Leah, you're one of us.
I am.
It's hard to say that in transition.
Very much so.
She is the partnership, right?
I agree with that.
But also, in Dr. CJ's role is vice president, provost of the university. And then Dr. Sharon Cypress, who has been in our meetings before, I believe. Dr. Cypress is dean over at the School of Education. And lastly, Dr. Leah Schull. Recent Dr. Leah Schull. I know you've worn that hat now for a little while, so it's getting more of a norm than an exception. But she was formerly West Chester kindergarten teacher for three years, two years?
Two years.
Two years. And then moved to the junior high. Was wooed by Dr. Anderson to come aboard and be an ELA teacher at the junior high for sixth grade. Is that correct?
That's right.
And then during her doctoral pursuit, she entertained other thoughts. And we were fortunate that we can partner with her continually now with the junior high efforts. So, Dr. Anderson is gonna be here with Dr. Schull, offering a presentation. It was in the newspaper a few weeks ago, but I want to expand that a little bit because of the unique opportunity that Dr. Byers, Dr. Cypress, Dr. Schull, and Dr. Anderson. Wow, we got so many doctors in the line.
Eleven.
But if you would, go ahead and share with us. There may be some questions after, but we're interested in hearing about this partnership.
Great. Ms. Marie brought me this thing. So, he told me all I had to do is click it up and down, but we'll see how it goes. We do have an incredible partnership with Free Hartman, and we are very blessed to have that at the junior high. Dr. Byers and Dr. Cypress are friends of mine. Dr. Cypress is my sister. If y'all don't know that, we look a whole lot alike. We've been sisters since 1987, is that right? 1987. She and I attended the university together and had opportunity to be friends then. So, I feel very blessed to be able to work with them. There it goes. This stresses me out more than anything. I feel Stephen, you might come up here. In 2018, C.C.J. just announced his additional target support improvement school, an ATS I school. So, we were given that tag. Just for information there, we removed that tag in one year's time, which is not always done. But our school removed that this past year. Dr. Schull was part of that process, a huge part of that. We're very proud of that. But because of this tag that we got for us, we were able to obtain a grant for about, I guess it rounds up to $125,000, right Stacy? Somewhere around in there. It's a lot of fun to work with that grant. Stacy's been incredible. I couldn't have done it without her. And so, we had had part, we had a plan on doing some math coaching with our grant. But Mr. Kilzer had already had foresight enough to be looking at that and putting Sarah Hibbin in that hole at a full-time position, which has helped our school immensely this year. And so, we've been looking some different directions of what we could do with this, and decided to be kind of creative. We have the opportunity to have Free Hartman students at our school all the time, learning to be educators. And so, we were thinking, what could we do in order to make that bond a little stronger and do more for them, and they do more for us? Fortunately, we had the opportunity to talk with Dr. Cypress. She and I sat down and worked through some things and made some decisions. And then, Dr. Byers and Mr. Kilzer came aboard and granted permission. So, you have to get authority from above before you can do anything. These are the things that it does for us. We have Free Hartman students, and they have the opportunity to work one-on-one with students. They instruct in our groups. They teach and they claim our whole group lessons. And all of this is based on data that's pulled from the Summit platform. Then we have a professor, which is Dr. Schull. And she pulls this data, and she's looking for instructional trends, student needs, as well as uses the data to educate Free Hartman students, so they have real information that they're working with. And so, basically, we have a modified laboratory school at junior high for our Free Hartman students. And we just got an email, I guess in the last hour, with a list of students based on data. There will be 24, I think, coming from Free Hartman tomorrow, who will be paired up with students who are struggling and have greater needs. And so, they have identified work. And Dr. Schull's already sent that out, so that everybody's aware of it and ready to go with that. Our students are receiving that support from a caring mentor on a weekly basis, as well as classroom time with a support teacher in the classroom. And then, the data is driving our instruction and mentoring, and so it's changing what we do each week. The most important part of this is really how our students perceive it. We have a young man, Mr. Kilzer's very familiar with him, Brady Wells. He's gonna be our next, our president someday.
He's gonna be president of the world.
He really, this young man is absolutely incredible. So, I spoke to Brady, and Dr. Schull's very familiar with him and working with him. And I said, can you just create a video for us? Because it's easier for them to see what happens in our school, as opposed to me continuing to talk. And he said, that's not a problem. I'll be happy to.
He's a seventh grader.
He's a seventh grader. And, and he did. This one here, Stephen?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Kilzer. So, I hinted to video at the beginning from his perspective of what this looks like at our school. And then edited this together on his own in order to let you all see what he sees, the partnership, and how he sees it at our school and what it looks like.
The one on the left is out.
I know. He's kinda wanna know if he's a hippo. But it's really neat to know that this is one of our students who's seeing this as a perspective and looking at the different visits he took at it, the larger group and down to the smaller, and what they're doing together in communication. And the Free Hartman student who's like, oh no, I think video, I'll stop looking now. So, there you go.
I'm here with Dr. Schull to find out some things about the Free Hartman partnership. Dr. Schull, how do Free Hartman students feel about getting to interact with teachers and students?
They are incredibly excited, because for some of them, this is their first experience working in a school. And they are so excited to get to put together all of the things they've been learning in class and make it come to life with real students. So, it's really exciting for them.
Why do you think it's so important that the Free Hartman students are able to interact and get that one-on-one personal relationship with students?
Well, just like with anything, you learn by doing. And so, if you wanna be a teacher someday, if you don't have any experience in that, it's gonna be really difficult. And so, getting that experience with working one-on-one with a student is incredibly valuable and something that we couldn't provide any other way.
How do you, what kind of students will you be looking for to help the students specifically? Like vary from one side of the spectrum to the other?
Well, because Summit gives us a lot of data on how our students are learning and how they're progressing in their knowledge. What I do is look at the data for the week to see where the learning needs are, who has the most critical needs, and that way we can match them with a helper, kind of like a one-on-one tutoring session almost. And so, they get to work together for an hour, and hopefully it is, it enables them to go further than that, but on their own.
Thank you.
The video and the questions was a spur of the moment. Dr. Schull had no idea that she was gonna be interviewed that day. And so, she came in and did that, and did an excellent job. She's been such a blessing to us, going through and being able to pull the data that she's been able to pull in order to make sure that we are reaching all of our students that we have. And it's just, it's actually been just an incredible experience. I'm very grateful, Mr. Kilzer, for having foresight and the willingness to back me as a principal with some crazy ideas and had to say, take a chance and we'll see what happens with it. He rarely says no. When he does, it's necessary. So, that's, that's a good thing. But I am very appreciative that we have superintendent willing to take chances like that. And then to Dr. Byers, who accepts a very new innovative piece to come into his school to see what we can do with this. And what's really incredible about it is that CJ is not only the provost at Free Hartman, but he's a father of a child participating in this, who will have access to this. And so, he has a dual role and a little bit more of, I guess, stock in it. Be a good word.
Alex did well today, by the way. I spent two hours with her today.
In the classroom.
I'm glad to hear that. I'll make a deal. I won't believe anything she tells me about you. I don't believe anything she says about me.
We'll sign the MOU.
That's basically what's going on. It's absolutely incredible. Dr. Schull, we would have, Chester County would have senior exits. She had several pending offers to go on to be a professor somewhere else. And to be honest with you, I didn't know those are out of my school. And so, we have been very blessed to be able to keep her part-time there, but also make her available for Free Hartman as well. So, I know Dr. Byers, she may have wanted to say something.
There's a couple things. First of all, I thought the description of Dr. Cypress and Dr. Belinda getting together and then inviting Mr. Kilzer and I to the meeting and getting our permission. I've never been so strong on my client. And saying no to those two that are tagged in is absolutely impossible. And not that we would want to, because it's very innovative. First of all, I wanna talk to you as a parent, if I can, just for a few minutes. Our kid started the school here at Katana. She was five, and East Chester is now a freshman here in the district. And our daughter, Alex, is at the junior high, a seventh grader. And we could not have asked for a better district for them to be put into. And they have just prospered tremendously. As I know all the students. It's also been fun to watch, I saw him walk in. I think one of them went there to the middle school at the same time Tommy come in. And to see that building transform under his leadership has been tremendous. I'm sure you all have seen that and experienced that. And then getting to see them come in with Belinda and see that transformation. You guys are on, you have a tremendous leadership team, and you are a tremendous trajectory. It's already a good district, but it's, best days are ahead of it, I think. So, I commend you as the board for hiring someone like Mr. Kilzer to lead and then to bring people in, like the two peoples behind me. So, I guess that, that's my second point, is thank you for opting for partnership. I think the best days are ahead of us in terms of partnership, too. I came to Free Hartman in 2010, to this school in 2011, and the opportunities for our students and for the university to work with Chester County, and for Chester County to work with us have just mushroomed during that time. And I appreciate the opportunity for us to be part of that, to be more ingrained in the community in a way that hopefully is making the community as a whole a greater place to live, to work, and to be educated. So, that's all I wanted to say, and to just say thank you for your sacrifices, I'd say. But I'm sure this, thank you here for this community, this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Leah got off the hook. Other than what was scripted out.
It was not. Although it was completely extraterrestrial. But luckily, I had a lot of training as a young person. The most exciting thing about this for me has been, you know, I've already gotten emails from teachers after our students have been, the Free Hartman students have been there working with the junior high, they would say, so-and-so passed their test. And I had one of these students last year, and it was a good four months till he passed a test last year. So, this is way progress. This is good progress, and I know that we're gonna see even more building as we go along.
We have an opportunity, gentlemen, to really see stronger clinical experiences for Free Hartman University students, just like Dr. Schull had said in the video. That practical experience is a whole lot better than the books only, the theory only, because they get to see it in real time. And you got this opportunity for students like Mr. Wells, who is the, you know, the king of the world in the next 20 years, to have an opportunity, because he just prospers under that type of environment. And I know with two-hour spin, and Alex performed extremely well, but that whole class that I was involved with was very actively engaged. It is not, I didn't see one child that had to be corrected for behavior, had to be corrected to get back on task. And that's becoming more of the social norm with, under Summit. I know Summit is so different, that most people are resistance to that much change. But again, just like Dr. Anderson said, to have the ATS I status, which was not a feather in the cap, that was a bad identifier. But to have it removed in one year is exceptional.
Well, I'd like to say I've been on the board a long time, and this is one of the best programs I think I've actually seen since I've been on the board, or one of the best, of bringing in the students to work with them, like you say, the mentors. I think it's great. Thank you all both.
Thank you.
And thank you for allowing them.
You the other way.
Any other comments to them?
I've got a question. This is, all takes place because of the grant? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Is it, will it continue? Can we continue this?
That is an excellent question. Sustainability on terms of the grant is within our students and within our teachers and the program that we're building right now. And so, when we began this, we look at it, and we know that's where our sustainability is. We hope to have the partnership as we move forward, and that will be something that we'll have to look at as we go. And I don't know why we wouldn't, but we'll have to just see.
Funding through ATS I.
Right. Well, it's a one-year, and that, we all went into it knowing that.
Yes. But it's something that I would love to see continue.
And I definitely, I'm confident that we can continue it. It may, we may twenty-git in some degrees where it comes to the funding, because of the grant. However, I'm confident that the process can continue. And we would love for it to, because like, like you all said, there's no better experience than hands-on experience. And they're benefiting from each other through reciprocity. And the partnership we've had with this county since Mr. Kilzer has been superintendent, I, I've been dinging 10 years, this is the best partnership I've ever had. And I thank you, and I thank all of you on the board for allowing this to happen. Thank you.
We're very fortunate to have, to find our higher ed institution with the street of reds that Free Hartman has in our community. Not every county has it, and I know we have been, or others have been coveting our relationship and the ability to grow to something greater, which I think we're on the right track. As Dr. Byers said, the trajectory is going the right way. Thank you.
Okay. Next thing, we have a agenda to discuss about, we're sitting for the, they say dead board. Shane. Okay. Yeah. Shane, you have a second. I'll raise my hand in the second. Do you have any other discussion? All the papers say aye. Foes know, congratulations Shane, and thank you, Kilzer. Okay. Then the next thing, we've got some policies that we need to be, some updates on, so great.
Well, the first policy that you have is 6.300. There are two copies. You have the TSVA draft, and you also have the Chester County Board of Ed policy. The last update was just last school year, at the start of the school year. But the 6.300, the new revision that TSVA is recommending, is based on the new state law change that has to require every school district to include restorative practices. It's extra practices, more, not as much punitive practices as far as disciplinary measures with our kids. You remember last school year when we were at West Chester, the information shared with you about trauma and form? That's along that same path. So, now the state has required every school district to include in their code of conduct for student behavior, to include these restorative practices. So, it is my recommendation, and let me give you a little bit more backstory. I asked Amy Woolley, who is the most trained of all principals around restorative practices, to give me some insight to what should be included, because there are some areas in that draft from TSVA that we have to have district practices included. And that's what's reflected in your board packet. So, for those highlighted areas, that came from a conversation with Amy Woolley. She fed me that information of what things that we could do aren't already doing at her school and other schools included.
Make motion, we approve the revision code of conduct policy.
Sir? We have a motion, sir, approve the code of conduct policy in the discussion. All the papers say aye. Approved then, we'll move on to the next policy.
The number six section is just doing some work related to the work that Shane and I are, we're being involved with, with the revision to some of our, well, our Williams Auditorium addition to the rental agreement. As I looked and reflected on what we're doing in our current paperwork, there is a, there is, and you mentioned a statement that we provide everybody who rents a copy of our policy 3.206. As I reviewed that policy again, and that's included in your board packet. Number three, which coincides, because my initial policy online was, had the lines numbered, so I apologize for just using lines numbered, but it is number three of the 10 sections, or 11 sections that are included, where it reads that "School facilities may not be used for private profit, except for unused facilities may be leased for private daycare centers, which provide educational childcare services to the community." That comes out of the state board, or excuse me, it comes out of TCA. Tennessee Code 49-2-203, lowercase b, four, uppercase B. I included that in your packet also, so that you know that it came straight from the state, or from the TCA code. What I would recommend, since we are working toward building this Williams Auditorium package rental opportunity for profit as well as nonprofit, that we change number three to read exactly what it reads in the TCA Code 49-2-203. And it's under that lowercase b, number four, uppercase B section, and it's verbatim. So, what I've included in our, what I include in our revision section for that section three, is it just simply says exactly that this code does permit that school facilities may be used for public, community, or recreational purposes under the rules, regulations, conditions as prescribed from time to time by the Board of Education. That is verbatim out of the TCA Code. So, that's my recommendation, is remove number three and replace it with what I just read to you.
I make a motion, that way you go along with your recommendation.
Sir?
I have a recommendation, go ahead and approve the changes to 3.206. We have a discussion. All the papers say aye. Foes know, then we approve.
Thank you.
Okay. The next thing is looking at the rental rates for the auditorium. And I know that Shane's been on, done a lot of work with this. And Shane, I appreciate your expertise in this field, but I don't know very much about renting that auditorium, but we'll try to cover it.
Sure. And again, Shane, I will defer to you anytime on this conversation, but you have this document that Shane generated. It gives us, this is again, above and beyond what we're talking about, the rental use of the actual facilities. Because, again, gentlemen, we have invested over $300,000 into the auditorium, and we wanna make sure that we keep it as pristine, working, good working condition as much as possible. So, when groups are choosing or asking to choose to rent Williams Auditorium, again, as we talked about last board meeting, of the rental rates, we had it based on three tiers. The first tier was no charge, and that would be for any school function, school-related function, talking about a school organization or a school group that wanted to use it. Second group was nonprofit. And then the third group was any other for-profit. What we included in this time, and this came out of the conversation that Shane and I had on the, I believe it was the 16th of September, was that when you look at, and again, the no charges for the first year for in-house school use, nonprofit was $2.50 a day for use, and then the other, any other for-profit would be $500 a day. Or, for those events that we know that $500 is a small fraction of what they're gonna be profiting from it, then it can go up to, negotiate it up to a 10% of the ticket sales. You use an example like sidewalk profits, you know, where that would be, if it sells out, and they're selling tickets for $15 to $20, is that right? So, instead of just charging a $500 rental fee for the use of the facilities, then it could go up to 10% of the ticket price, or the ticket sales, 10% of that ticket sales. Which you can imagine, if it sells out, they earn 50 tickets. That's quite a bit of 10%. And I'm on the right track with that.
Yeah, basically, if you had, let's say 800 seats, just for about $20, $16,000, the rent would be $1600 instead of $500, because it makes it more fair. Some events are gonna have 800, some are gonna have 100. So, it's not really fair to charge a lapped fee for the profit margin they'll be making if it's a for-profit event. And that is on scale with venues that I worked with in Jackson. They do that at the NED and the Civic Center, Golden Arena when it was in use. They do the similar package.
Where is that gonna break down, at what capacity? It has to be a sell-out for it to go the?
No, versus, period, because if you had, only sold 200 tickets, but the tickets were $100 a piece, it's a gala-type thing. Then, you see what I'm saying? It's 10% versus 500, whichever is greater.
Okay. So, it starts, right. That's the only thing I didn't understand when you were talking about.
It's a versus. So, it's which versus, meaning whichever is greater of the two.
And then what you're seeing on your, the one that's got the logo for Williams Auditorium at the top, this is the breakdown of additional fees that would be included for the use of the equipment that we have, that we have invested in, a lot of resources, for the sound and the lighting equipment, then having event staff, and then, again, if they have additional, like some of these, like Shane and I talked about, some have their own merchandise that they like to sell at the site. Books or shirts or whatever memorabilia they'll have, then there is extra, additional opportunities for gain revenue for the school system based on that.
And again, that's a common practice in all venues. So, basically, it levels the playing field. If they went to a Dixie, for example, or Carperton Civic Center, they're gonna pay 20% of every t-shirt they sell. Why do we not take advantage of the same thing? So, that's why it's added, because it's on a for-profit show, it's normal.
I've got a comment. You were talking about keeping it pristine. I don't want us to get lax when we have in-house school functions, you know, we say, the school's gonna be there. We still need to be, have people there to, and I know we will, to take care of our equipment.
Yes, sir.
You know, I don't want to get lax on there, for sure.
Well, if you would talk about that, if our, for example, Shane, let's suppose that our play group, our drama team, does wanna use our lighting and sound, which they probably will, then they have to also use one of the trained and approved technicians.
Okay. As long as that's followed, that's one, that's.
There's two or three. There's a list you can provide. They will say, well, be visible, I don't know one. We know three or four, we can give them the number, they work out their own. But they are people who know how to run the equipment. It's not just, well, Billy runs it at church, he knows how to do it. No, this is a specialized board, and not everybody can run.
As I said, with Carl Perkins, they had about four or five different people up there playing with it.
Right.
None of them could operate.
Right. That's, that's important on the front end to contact. It's not their fault, that's their fault, they show up and they don't know. It's gonna be important to contact with advance. Do you need someone there? No, this is a specialized board, and not everybody can run.
As I said, with Carl Perkins, they had about four or five different people up there playing with it.
Right.
None of them could operate.
Right, that's important on the front end, to contact, it's not their fault, necessarily if they show up and they don't know, it's going to be important to contact with advance, do you need someone there to?
Are you going to be using this equipment? Because if you are going to use our equipment, now some groups. Is it secured where that it can't be?
Yes. The ones who use it regularly, that is, don't really need the expense of a sound person, like in the cinema. This, this friend of mine I know that runs this equipment, he owns the exact board we have in that building, he has offered to come and do presets. So if, for example, if Mr. Kirk wanted to come in and turn it on and hit a button, and his microphone's hot and that's all he needs, it'll be preset for that. And when the next person comes in, they can set it to anything they want to. The next day, he's got another event, you can come in, hit that same button, and go right back to how he needs it. So it can be, have presets, numbered presets for our in-house events that are, you know, easy to run, that it doesn't take someone to be there at all the whole time. That's the beauty of this board, being digital. It can be preset different ways, and go back to it at any time.
Any other question with, now again, the page that has, this was, this is what we're already using right now, this section. We're generating these documents every time we have a rental. It follows that, the one that's got the, it's the tag. It will be on the one pager for our purpose, it'll be a front and back, so they'll know what the rates are. And again, this is what we use for whatever, like if a classroom gets used at the middle school instead. This is the same structure that we use, but we will have the, again, on the front end, this is where the renter will have prior knowledge before the event of what actually their charges will be, and how they're, they will pay those charges prior to us. And then the principal, or designee, and then the director of schools will sign off.
You wouldn't be fair to this year, because they're already booked. On any event that's already on books, you can't do this for, because it should be grandfathered in, out of fairness, but.
Because I know that.
That would just be a conversation, because some things you have to understand for community goodwill, but that's just a conversation we have to make on a per-event basis.
Because you still got to clean up the.
Right.
Now, there's still being cleanup charges. Well, I mean, but still, though, when you're selling concessions, that's going to be worse.
Right.
Is there, is there a contract, or is there a need for a contract, to make sure that we're covered as far as our cleanup, maintenance, any kind of damages or anything like that, Shane?
I would have to create a separate contract, like we have at the NED, with more of the technical legalities for bigger events included, then we can create one.
We haven't had one, our Tennessee Risk Management Trust liability coverage is good for any school event, good school facilities.
But if they carry something up, so.
Well, that was my next question, was actually about insurance. Do we need a separate insurance policy, an event policy to cover?
I'm not familiar with what that covers, so.
Well, I mean, we're covered with all of our events that are outside of the regular school lighters, that if it's at our facilities, we're covered by that. Now, I don't know if there's, if it's a for-profit organization that comes in.
But I can speak from experience on how I worked in Jackson, and we can see research. If you rented a building in Jackson for a larger show, they had to show you an insurance policy with the venue named as an additional insurer, and it was a million-dollar policy for each significant event for profit. But they paid for it, they, they.
That's part of their.
That's part of their agreement. You had to show the venue is covered under your policy, and provide that proof that you held that before your event took place.
We've never had that. I mean, we haven't done that, so the president's has not been saying it, but we might need to look into it. I know for other county events, for instance, the Porky Festival, there's.
Not one day insurance policy.
When we have special events, I agree, Justice Center, we have to have special event policies.
Right. Yes.
We've already, we've.
Except for the versus, the versus 10%, that was unincluded last time. It was just a straight $500 fee, and somebody brought up, maybe it was Dwight who brought up last, last month about, you know, is that enough? Because some of the events will be natural.
Yeah.
So that's the only change?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we make that revision to the policy.
We have a motion, say we make a revision to the policy, change the charges in the discussion. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Those that will approve.
On Williams Auditorium, I had a, I had a couple of people make a request, and I thought I'd ask them, but since we spent so much money on the inside, you know, getting everything all fancy and whatever, they said, you know, where the lettering is outside, and they said Williams Auditorium, they wanted to know if we could get those letters painted, like a royal blue, or.
They probably were at one time. They were, I'd say.
Well, let's lay that out, unless you know the paint.
I would say yes, Brett can paint those. Yeah, we can, we can do that.
We'd like those blue, too.
Some of them have optimized some, and I don't, it probably would be a tremendous problem. Somebody you want to do, it would be, but I can't stand on the ground and reach them, I don't feel that.
I would say pull them down, paint them, put them back up.
I would, and we've got a truck that can, we've got a boom truck, and we can, of course, they've been up there forever or something.
Oh, they've been there, it's probably.
But yes, we can do that, because Shane and I talked about even some big panel boards, again, similar to what the high school has in front, eventually as revenue generates and we can afford it, to have some type of event calendar.
The ideal thing is we reinvest the revenues to get them signed to promote the events and the school. I mean, it is still an education facility, so.
You can do this.
So I bet we'd be the ultimate.
That's not tomorrow, Tommy.
I second that.
So we're going to, that's from, the next thing is going to talk about the use of general service, toy product that maybe have one of our janitors, somebody we already have on staff, to, a lot, five hours a week to go in and just doing just auditorium.
Weekly, going in to the main proper auditorium, because that doesn't get the TLC that the lobby does in the bathrooms. The custodians now take care of the school up through the lobby area and those bathrooms, because they're used often. But as far as the actual auditorium setting itself and the backstage rooms with bathrooms there, that doesn't have the attention. And like I was telling earlier before the meeting started, we do have drama clubs, drama groups that are coming in there on occasion to practice whatever, they may be bringing water, or some other snacks and stuff, so, you know, it's given a weekly attention to something that we have not had regularly before. Five hours a week is what, and you see the job description about what will be done each week.
Well, my question would be, would that affect having to pay the custodial rate on a per-event basis? But it seems like that might be never.
Those fees never include, they clean up after the fact, but then if that building sits two weeks before the next event, and the drama goes in there cutting wood, and they leave things around, and then the event starts, and people are like, this place is a mess. That covers the front end of it.
But like, whoever was cleaning up after events would not do things such as occasional like stripping and waxing the floors. They wouldn't strip and wax, so.
Just to keep the game ready, you know.
It's probably expensive.
And they'll be about 2:20 in the morning.
Well worth it. Because even after the, if those, like, if you put your, some people, the kids especially, put their feet on those seatbacks, the mud, I mean, there was a little bad after we cleaned it off the other night.
Oh, really?
So just make sure it's, like you said, spit the next thing.
It's five hours, I know.
It, for the most part, yes, if it gets to where we really need, I mean, we can add a little, because it's not going to be a, I'm looking at more of a custodian that's like on our sub-list or something, so it really won't come overtime against us, and somebody who's good knows what to do, but five hours, that should be enough for per week. If we have to really, you know, one week, it might be we have two or three events, we might say, hey, I need you a little more, but I think five would be sufficient to keep it, keep it right.
Does somebody come behind him and check, and make sure that it's painted?
Oh, yeah.
Because I mean, is that, is that going to happen, or is, or not?
Oh, we've got people in place for that. You're actually talking to it.
That's what I'm asking, you know, a man's going to pay.
Well, before the first event, I spent five hours, but. And I'm sure Tommy would have knowledge of that, too, being in the building itself. You know, there's not, there's going to be accountability. It helps when you pay.
And drama goes in pretty much daily now, getting ready for the next play, so they would be able to say, hey, this is advertised and so forth.
We have a custodian, I didn't know that you guys were going to address this, and so I had already worked with one of my custodians, and it's her responsibility daily to just put her eyes on the auditorium, every part of it. And so even if this other person is contracted to do other things, at least our custodian will have her eyes put on it to say, this needs to be done, and this needs to be done.
Make a motion there.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion there. We have a motion, say the additional stolen role auditorium, any other discussion? All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Those that will approve. Okay, and the next thing is approval of the judgment of Williams' policy.
Okay, you have in your board packets a listing of all the approved fundraisers. The majority of fundraisers are at school, high school. By the way, this is homecoming week, I'm sure Dr. Catton would be here tonight, celebrating with us with all these fundraisers, but he's got a bonfire starting at eight o'clock tonight, so I'm sure he's on campus. But had their parade today. By the way, he's wanted to make sure that you guys knew that for the parade, four, I think he told me only four children checked out, said that the attention that you guys granted with the exemption policy, he says the kids are talking about it often, so it's keeping them in school, which is good. So he was very complimentary of that. But going back to this, of all the fundraisers that's been requested, there were some, this is only the approved ones, there were some that didn't make the cut. And part of those that didn't make the cut were those such as Krispy Kreme doughnuts sales.
I miss those.
Also, your, out of your catalog, your chocolate sales, you know, your candies. Again, based on federal law, you have to qualify your snacks. They have to be within a listing of smart snacks that have federal requirements.
Have other students still sell candy?
That's what you guys are going to have to consider tonight, if you want to approve.
I think we don't do, I mean, because, you know, most of the kids don't buy them anyway. I buy them.
Well, here is the.
Well, we go.
If you look in your, there is a special exemption that meets this, that's what is included. Now, this is state board event rule, special exemptions for infrequent, infrequent, not every day, infrequent school-sponsored fundraisers. So what we have to do is what I'm asking you, gentlemen, to consider. We have to take our existing wellness policy, which drives our nutritional program, and we have to include, which is not included right now, we have to include this section which represents special exemptions for fundraisers, for infrequent fundraisers. And you see, the first two bullets means that it can't be any more than two, or excuse me, it can't be more than 20 school days per semester at the site, and it cannot be sold, your Krispy Kremes can't be sold at the school while in competition with the school program, school meal program. The third bullet is the principals of the school will ensure that that 20-day limit is managed. They are going to police their own account. But it has to be included, it has to come before you guys and board policy or board approval before we can make that adjustment. And then what I told them is after the board decision, if you approve, I will go back and reconsider Krispy Kremes. There's two or, two or, two or three of those, and candies for infrequent fundraiser use.
I make a motion, make it include. So is that, are there Krispy Kremes in candy bars?
Can I make a, can I make a comment?
Oh, sure. Yeah, I want to be spoken.
I'm definitely not against, but you had asked the question, why do we not do that? And I just want to point out that when you're in competition, when a child comes to school hungry, and they eat a doughnut for breakfast versus a school breakfast, that's not going to sustain them. They are going to buy a doughnut for lunch and not a school lunch, it's not going to sustain them. And we have a lot of children that we're feeding, breakfast, lunch, weekend foods, sometimes they go eat at the community soup kitchen, so that's why we don't want them sold during the school day. So I just want to make that very clear. There's a, we have a lot of children that need to eat food, food.
Doctor.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not going to be sold at school.
No, but you had said, why didn't we? And that.
No, I mean, why don't we do, because other schools still sell the candy bars, because I buy them.
That's true, some do.
Now, this is not created by me, this is coming right out of the state board event rules. Their rules are these bullet points.
Well, can we add to this third bullet point? Would it be too much to ask that the principals also ensure that the fundraiser products aren't being sold in competition with school meals?
Yes, sir.
Can we?
Yes, sir. Yes, I can include, I know what you're saying, that you're taking that same, that second bullet, including that as a principal's responsibility. Not only is it a 20-day limit.
Not only to, just to ensure that they don't exceed the 20-day limit, but also.
But also, it's not.
Make sure that we're not selling.
They're not opening, opening a box of Krispy Kremes and popping them in school.
We've got some money at state there if we violate those federal guidelines.
Oh, yes, very much so. Yeah, our federal lunch program is what drives us. We have a lot of kids who get to have free lunch, free meals, free breakfast, everybody, free lunch for several, and that's coming through the federal program. So if you lose that opportunity, it would cause a great change in budgets. And I would say this, Mark had asked, and I did follow up with one principal to check current inventories of what they're selling in their snack shack, to make sure that they are meeting the, and he said they're not buying those, some of those again, but I'll need to follow up with it. And I agree with you, Dwight.
Bring a little dog.
I'm all for them. I just don't want to lose federal money.
No, no, because it's sold outside of school, I mean, they have to, because I buy them.
Well, I make a motion, we have a second. So can we have a second, to weed out easy exemptions for the fundraisers, any other discussion? All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Those that will approve. Make your money, thank you. Make your money.
Thank you very much.
Good talk, Coach.
This thing over here is.
I have a sermon to bear.
Well, again, you've got to include in your board packet, there were three major items that the discussion occurred, the policy, the financial policy committee meeting that we had at the end of August, that one, we looked at the first section of the board policy, we did not consider any revisions at that time, of course, there were several revisions that just recently made in section one. The second part was what we're, again, and this is some preliminary conversations that we've had with internally in the office staff between Stacy, myself, Thomas Leach, a few others that have district, in the district office, that have voiced their opinions about an alternate salary schedule. What we found, and what's been stressed to me, especially from Thomas and from Stacy, is that when you compare our salary schedule with the SOAR salary schedule plan, and you look at a comparison to some of the other districts in our neighborhood, we are having a difficult time competing with them, keeping what we have for the entry level. Because we have some of our folks who are working like maybe their third or fourth year of employment, and they don't have the LOE that generated those rich, robust salary base increases each year, and because of our state minimum salaries increasing the last two years, or three years, that we have some that were making less after three or four years of experience than people coming in afresh and new this year.
I thought we adjusted that to where there's.
We have to adjust the entry because of the salary.
Well, I mean, I thought we adjusted the other ones up.
Now, we added to everybody, we gave everybody like a two-step.
Yeah.
Increase, but that didn't adjust anybody. That didn't. That didn't, the, again, our salary schedule is set up on performance basis, so whatever that LOE is, and by the way, LOEs are going to be announced next Friday at five o'clock, so that'll be for the 2021 calendar year, we'll know what their contract will be, the new salary would be, after those LOEs are published. But what we're talking about is a salary schedule similar to what we had before with lanes based on degrees, and then years of experience from one year or zero year up to year 20, and then we're also going to get another bump at year 25, but then it tops out at year 25. There's pros and cons with both. We've looked at the dynamics of our schools currently with years of experience and degree measures or levels that we have. We're roughly 50% of all staff in the district that have a bachelor's degree, roughly 40% have masters, and just a few, the other 10% or a little bit less than 10% has a higher degree, either a masters plus, EDS, or EDD. But the majority of our folks are bachelors and masters, which are the only two that the state gives you state minimums. But what we're looking at, and again, we haven't shared any numbers with any staff, we had a conversation with the faculty advisory committee last week, Mark joined in the meeting. We gave general outlook of what those salary schedules would look like and how we would have conversations with each veteran teacher. Just as we rolled into the SOAR, we're going to have an individual meeting with each individual teacher who is a veteran, and we're going to, let's say, looking at what you're currently on the SOAR, or what we're projecting with or promoting with this new salary schedule, which one would benefit you? And if you go, and if you go over, you stay over. The new, whatever we land with with our salary schedule will be where the new funding goes in, where all the new employees will go in. And what we're trying to do is at an entry point, trying to make it more attractive so we can be better competitors with other area districts with a richer entry level. And then, again, not facing the steps or the salary increases based on anything more than degree and years of experience. So, they're guaranteed that regardless of the LOE.
One little thing, and it's their choice. I think that was left out, they have the choice to stay where they're at, if it will work or move up, it's their choice.
We don't need any of those left.
We will have, we will have several on the higher end of our steps in the SOAR that will want to stay.
Let me understand this. Entry level person that we hired in here starts out more than a teacher with three years of experience. What if that teacher is a level two or three or whatever? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, what I'm saying is, is like, for example, three years ago, if a teacher came in first time, and I think that's when we went either, we were 34.5, then we went to 35.2, and now we're at 36,000 because of requirements by the state. The state doesn't tell you how you spend all your money, but they do give you state salary minimums for zero to five, six to 10 for bachelors and masters, I think that's it. And that's what gives everybody else their structure for their bachelors, masters, masters plus. Everybody back when we first considered SOAR were told, you might as well take the federal dollar, because everybody's going to be doing it. Well, that's not true. What happened is they began to evolve into how we can do this differentiated pay plan. And the differentiated pay plan now looks more like paying coaching supplements out for other roles that happen, like an instructional coach, or a data coach, or a math coach. You pay extra supplements for that, and you differentiate because their work has changed. So, it satisfies that, but they're able to still maintain their salary stepping level schedules. So, when we went full bore into the one step, there is attributes to that. There is no other district other than curable that offers a higher end salary schedule than what Chester County does. Topping out 75 step, that last step is at 61,900. There's only one district curable, and they do it in the last end of their year as an EDD. So, you could literally be a bachelor's degree, seasoned educator, but you had those, you know, five every year, and you could end up with 61,900, which no other district. But the thing about it is, is what's expressed to me, when you're hiring a new teacher, they're not looking that way. They're not looking 20 years ago.
Today.
They're looking what it is today. And what's been shared with me, Norris, is that, and this was the example that expressed to me, you can have one of our three or four-year veteran teachers that haven't had, and usually your levels of effectiveness don't come to the benefit until they're seasoned. Usually, they pick up the pace and they run better then. But you could literally have somebody in May saying, I resign, resign their position, but then if the position is still open and offers...
Rehire.
Rehire and come back with a higher pay scale. So, we wanted to have an opportunity to fix it, and that's what's suggested. The choice is made it appealing to all, and the faculty advisory committee had a range of people from four- to five-year folks, like what I'm describing, all the way up to 25-plus year veterans, and they all heard it, Mark was there. We didn't give them any numbers, because we didn't have numbers yet. We looked at, well, in your packet, it says that we compared it against Hardeman County, Madison County, and McNairy County. But all of them have a little bit different pay range. Some have a higher pay range at an entry level point, but they, they top out quicker.
Top out after 20 years.
Well, Madison County tops out at 15.
15, yeah.
So, so, you know, again, maybe we're not yet where we need to be, we need to have another meeting or two with our policy and finance committee to look at what we're suggesting. We've had about three different examples to look at. We've kind of been more narrow focused on one of them. We don't have any numbers yet to officially share, but we're going to go to the committee first in an upcoming meeting, you guys are going to be made aware of that, whatever comes out of that committee.
Well, I saw something, when did you take this right wound to a fay?
For next year.
For next year.
Yes, sir. But now, to do that, we would have to, we'd have to have conversations with everybody to know where they're going to land, because whatever we decide as our salary schedule, it'll be the shiny penny, but it's not going to be until everybody sits down and looks at it compared to what their current numbers are.
We're not going to have the teachers in uproar and get arsed.
I don't think so, because there's choices. If they want to stay...
They have choice on other plans too.
Well, if they, if they want to stay with the SOAR until they retire, they can do so. But the thing about it is, is the SOAR is fixed, we've made a commitment that we're going to make a $350 pay raise each year that that LOE goes up by, you know, if they have a three, four, five, it's 350 per pop, so three is one step, four is a two, and five is a three. And we're going to hold on to that and continue to fund it that way. But any, if we have any new governor, any new government that comes in and says we're going to do a three, four, five, or 10% increase, all the new dollars are going to be funded into the stepping level, the new plan, whatever that new plan is.
So, y'all are going to present that in a few...
It's going to go to the, we're probably, I'm going to ask Shane and Mark to see if we can work on that in October, since we don't have a board meeting then, so we can get something nailed down, so you can have it before you in November. Because we need to have something that we can entertain to our folks to know exactly where we're landing with budget, because that's got to be budgetary numbers before. If nobody likes what we have, then it's going to be more of the same of what we're doing. But if we have a wholesale movement to it, then that's going to adjust the numbers. This new, this new salary schedule is going to be richer overall in budget than the SOAR that we're currently in.
Anybody else got any discussion on the book dates? Have you seen, we didn't build softball and baseball projects, I'm creating a board.
Congressmen board, they're going to start framing the junior, or the softball first, and then that crew is going to move to baseball after.
I didn't want to bring it up, since Stacy's saying across from us that we didn't have any findings on the state audit this year. Congratulations, thank you for a good job.
And bookkeepers at the school, I mean, it's, as you see here, you've got a whole lot of money changing hands at all levels.
Anybody else got anything?
Yeah, I do.
All right, that's right, I know God's fault, I'm going.
Yeah, so you already forgot. No, I, I, I go to these retired teachers, maybe, now, my retired teacher, but they beat me, so I...
That's a good reason to go.
I had two or three of them say something to me, and then tonight, when I got here, Dr. Snapper was talking to me about it, and I didn't know anything about all that. But they were talking about if it would be possible for these retired teachers, and I don't know how many of them would, would even want it, could get like some kind of a ID thing to where they could get in the SCUVA events like ball games, the free.
Yes, sir.
And free Hardeman, the, well, of course, they left, but they have, one of, one of the people that was at the, at the meeting was, was retired from both places.
That, that's not a problem. That can happen.
I mean, I'm sure you can go to Dr. Catton, he can take care of it, he can get him the shirt off his back.
Oh, I know, but I didn't know, of course...
You're talking about all of the, now, when you talk about all of the events, you're talking about athletic events.
I'm talking about like ball games and that kind of stuff.
Now, I'll be honest with you, I pay, I don't know if you guys do, but if you go to a play, I pay to go to a play.
Yeah.
So, those, you know, but...
Most, that type thing.
Okay, I'm just making sure.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't, I don't know that it would be all inclusive, and then like the ball games, you know, I don't know how many of them would be, would even want one.
But I know Clay Murley gave all of us, and I'm passing it on to you guys to...
Yeah, we got paid.
All sporting events.
Yeah.
So, all sporting events that takes up tickets at the door, you guys have got that, so that would be generated, Wes does the same thing.
Yeah.
Wes McPhee at Junior High.
Yeah, we got, yeah, we, we get the...
Yes, he does.
Next to you.
Make a motion there.
Yes, sir.
So, we're talking about retired teachers from Chester, not just retired, retired...
Yeah, which can, I mean, yeah, I don't think...
Hardeman County has moved into Chester. Yeah, when you do that.
Always, they do just get their passes, and then...
Oh, but you know, I'll pay in what the... preliminaries are as far as, and, and, and I was in on this, but it's 15 years ago, starting like a rebounder's club or something like that, I bought, they, they talk about trying to start something like that at where they are.
As a school support organization?
Yeah.
Because there's, there's, there's legal guidance, financial legal guidance that's out there.
Yeah, and, but I didn't know, oh, and I thought, that's the other thing I don't sure, you know, you have to have bylaw, you have to have...
Officers.
Officers, you have to have, I mean, it's set up like, and...
But I can share you, I can share with you what we have, I mean, it's, it's state, there's state guidance, state financial guidance that we have for schools, they call them SSOs, school support organizations.
Okay.
It's got their own, they have to get their own tax exception number too.
Yeah. Yeah.
They can't bribe the high school or whatever school that they're associated with, they have to...
Also, and this is, I don't know if this is under requirement, I know, but, oh, I thought you, I thought you said, I told her, I think it'd be a good idea, anybody, when it comes to handling money, they didn't have to be like, oh...
At least two.
Oh, yeah. Who's that, that happened to that?
Those people that keep them out of show.
That's right.
But, so you've got, you've got time for your...
Well, I mean, it's all online, it's easy to generate.
Oh, it is?
Oh, yes, sir.
I can, what did you say?
School support organizations. Even if you typed in that from the state department, you probably have it, but I'll go look.
I can look that.
School support organizations, they have it. Do what they have.
Controllers.
Controllers website, state comptroller.
All right.
Make a motion, we turn.
Before we go any further, before we get a second round, I want to announce our next meeting will be November the 21st, November the 21st, computer board office. We have a motion to second the juror, all the favors say aye. It's approved.